I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting from Monday, August 2nd, to order at this time, and we'll start with the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, followed by the pledge of allegiance from our assistant county manager, Janil Galloway. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity. Guide our thoughts and actions to accomplish our work this day. May your blessings be upon us always. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize some of our elected officials that have joined us this morning. I believe Ms. Amiga Jarman, our Register of Deeds, was here. There she is. Couldn't see her there. Ms. Melissa Oakley from Onslow County Board of Education, and in the back, our Sheriff, Mr. Chris Thomas, and then from North Topsail Beach, Mr. Rick Grant, and then from Holly Ridge, Ms. Pam Hall. So we appreciate you being here with us this morning and as we conduct the business of Onslow County. We ask that all in attendance, please set their cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited, no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue in which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. Now, we're looking for a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Sub move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none. We have an adoption of our agenda this morning. If any of the Commissioners have an item on the consent agenda they'd like to have removed, now is the time. Otherwise, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sub move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Consent agenda is adopted. So we'll move on to item three, public comment. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. We do have one citizen who has signed up today to speak in our public comment period. I remind all citizens that you have exactly five minutes. Please address the Board as a whole and no one Board member individually. And please take your seat at the conclusion of your five-minute period. I will call on Ms. Melissa Oakley, 109 Knott's Court, Sneed's Ferry.
Y'all know I need more than five minutes, but good morning. Melissa Oakley, 109 Knott's Court, Sneed's Ferry. Greetings, Chairman Foster, Vice Chairman Knapp, and to all of the esteemed Board members. I come today to speak to a few things that are relevant to today, and as of recent, it is important for people to realize that though we hold elected positions, we're still citizens of this great county, just as everyone else. That said, on July 31st, I reached out to Chairman Foster and Vice Chairman Knapp regarding an elderly neighbor in my subdivision who had suffered a broken neck from falling from her bike because of the infamous potholes that so many of us have in our neighborhoods and sought direction on the who, what, how of DOT because I had absolutely enough at that point. My neighbor, Ms. Connie, rode her bike daily to maintain a quality of health that I only hoped to have a fraction of at her age. These gentlemen assisted informed me that Mr. Ben Warren, Assistant County Manager, had stepped into the proverbial room to which, at the end, was a great help for me having some investigative assessment begin with DOT. I had a direct exchange with the Regional Supervisor of DOT, who is also an Onslow County native, to begin some immediate repairs to our neighborhood, so I thank you all for that advocacy today. That said, I watch your meetings every morning and evening that you have them, and I notice who listens to the constituents who speak regarding development of their neighborhoods or around them and how those votes fall. See, the issue in my neighborhood is that it's our subgrade. Our asphalt is fine. If you lay good asphalt over a poorly done environmental clearing process and rush to finish a job, within 10 to 15 years, you have citizens like me standing before you at this Board asking, why on God's green earth are you allowing these rapid constructions and approvals of land destruction to develop? This is only the cost of constituents physically and financially over time. I hear many of you speak about good investments over time, so I ask that you please do more research regarding the subgrade process before you approve permits for development. It costs citizens with vehicle maintenance unless we begin to speak about the number of disabled people and particularly veterans in our community who suffer chronic pain daily as they hit every bump in the road because of subpar conditions that could have been avoided from the start. Secondly, I want to thank you all for your support of our school system, its staff, and more so the children who are served with a constitutional education and what we all aspire to be the absolute safest environment. I am humbled and grateful to stand before you today as an individual member of the Board of Education after last year's unfortunate tragedy at Northside High, leaving us all with a sting in our soul as a child's life was lost. And let you know that because of my initiating the line of questioning regarding a risk assessment, y'all know I love questions, that brought us to the total of $63,000. As a district and system, we are now sitting in a prime position for being in the front of the line for North Carolina Center for Safer Schools grant funding, which requires no match by county dollars. I know you're all excited to hear that. So this is the epitome of an investment potentially returning double and triple-fold while remaining fiscally conservative. Lastly, Ms. Griffin, thank you, my dear. Today is your last day in the seat. I was here on March 17th, 2020, for your first day, your oath as the county manager, and I felt it was only right to be here today, so I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for allowing that brand-new, hot-headed Board of Education member that was elected in a pandemic to spout off in an email, "Let the help director do her job because she's a beast in her own right and has statutory authority." That you were doing, but in my frustrations, you showed grace. And you also held a gentle demeanor and a kind demeanor in all things. You understood, you respected, and appreciated my passion for our community and district. You, queen, deserve all the roses today as you see people for people and understand that we're all here for a purpose and a cause. You're an inspiration and a motivation to other women and young girls who aspire to be or in government as myself, and I wish you the best in all you do. As I close, I want to make it plain that to all that have ears to hear, some people are boss hogs and some people are leaders. Leaders inspire. Leaders do not instill fear. They give grace and support. They have grit where most necessary. Bosses make demands. They make commands. They create gaps and instill fear, drive people away from organizations and destroy confidence. With that attitude, everyone suffers and most of all the people that they serve. You can find a boss every day of the week, but in today's society, you have to examine closely for a leader. Sharon, I commend you for having a leader's heart. God bless you all. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield my time back to the forum. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Oakley. That concludes our public comment period.
Thank you, Ms. Oakley. Now we move right into the business with a few planning and rezoning hearings this morning. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Chairman Foster and Commissioners, today we have three public hearings, and I will call Carter Metcalf up to do our staff background. Our first one is PREZ 2023-18, our public hearing on Hunter's Cove rezoning.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. The first item this morning is the Hunter's Cove rezoning request, as Ms. Griffin said, PREZ 2023, number 18. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owners are Garland and Sue Tooten. Now to begin with an overview of the request, the change is from Community Business to Residential 10, or CB to R10. Tax map number is 1115-19. Location is on Hunter's Trail, just off of Piney Green, and is in the White Oak Township. The rezoning area is 3.49 acres. Any existing use is that the property is currently vacant and forested. An overview of the services, there is a 10-inch Onwassa Water Line that is on the southern side of Hunter's Trail. On the northern side, there is Onwassa Sewer Force Main. The fire service is the Piney Green Fire District with an ISO rating of five. And the traffic data we have is off Piney Green Road. In 2018, it was 18,000 trips with a staff estimated capacity of 49,000. The schools servicing the property is Hunter's Creek Elementary, Hunter's Creek Middle, which are adjacent and just down to Hunter's Trail, and also White Oak High School. Both the elementary school and the middle school are overcapacity while the high school has some capacity. Now we'll take a look at the map. It's currently CB. You can see they're outlined in blue, and the proposed change is to Residential 10, which there is some adjacent just to the south of the property. You see that in orange. And there's other adjacent residential zoning there on the western side of Piney Green while rural agriculture is on the eastern side. Again, we'll look at that. The current zoning district is Community Business, no minimum lot size. And the purpose of the Community Business zoning district is to accommodate the establishment of small-scale retail and service uses that serve the nearby neighborhood and rural community. Now we'll compare it to the proposed zoning district of Residential 10. Minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, or .23 acres, and the purpose of this district is to accommodate moderate-density single-family, limited multifamily, in kind of urbanizing areas of the county that have access to that necessary utility and transportation infrastructure. Now we'll take a look at the future land use category is medium-density residential. This category provides for single-family residential areas, planned multifamily, and limited commercial. We'll take a look at the map, and you can see that whole area there is medium-density residential. We'll look at reasonableness in the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable because there is adjacent residential zoning, and R10 is a direct corresponding zoning district. This is supported by 11 policies of the Comprehensive Plan, and the summary of these is that we support a diversity of residential housing as well as compact designs. And the proposed zoning may be considered unreasonable because there is some commercial there along Piney Green, and there necessarily isn't a clear transition over to residential zoning or any sort of buffer there. And three policies of the Comprehensive Plan would detail around that. Now we'll look at Planning Board, met on August 24th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. And the applicant spoke on behalf of it, and those citizens spoke against it. We'll take a look at the aerials here. Here you can see the property as well as the kind of the adjacent schools. Take a little closer look. You can see the property is currently forested. And as well, you see, we properly noticed the sign. And this concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, I will open the public hearing for PREZ 2023-18. This is the Hunter's Cove rezoning. We have two citizens who have signed up to speak. I will call our first citizen, Mr. Trevor Keller of 307 Hidden Oaks Drive.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am a current resident of Hunter's Creek within Hidden Oaks. I'm the HOA president, and I am here to speak upon all the other residents that are opposed to this rezoning. They have spoken on the Facebook groups that we have, and they are opposed due to the kind of possible residents that would move into townhomes if they do build them. Also stated that the middle school and the elementary school are currently at max capacity, so if they do bring in families with kids of middle school and elementary school age, it would just worsen the problem at the middle school and elementary school. Also, with bringing in new townhomes into this intersection, I've lived there since 2019. I've lost count of how many accidents have been at that certain intersection. Also, we just, we're just, the residents are very opposed to this, and we have, they have made it very clear on public social media that they are. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Our second speaker is Lori Morris of Tidewater Associates.
Good morning. My name's Lori Morris, 306 New Bridge Street, Tidewater and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the property owner. We do have, as said, we do have water and sewer availability to the site. We do have some multifamily behind the site, and yes, there are school sites next to us. Obviously, DOT is going to restrict driveway connectivity to Hunter's Trail, so what, and I know you're not approving the plan itself, but we probably only have about two driveways onto Hunter's Trail because of the too many driveways on this road. But I'm here if you have any specific questions that I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Morris. That concludes our public hearing, and at this time, I will close the public hearing, and this issue is now available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I got a question. So I guess they wanted to take this property and turn it into townhouses. Is that correct? Something like that. One of the key things I got out of the speaker is you worry about the clientele that may move in there. Am I correct?
I think Carter needs to come up and answer these questions.
Commissioners, the rezoning request before us, even though the applicant and their comments may have stated they're interested in townhomes, we have to consider all proposed uses. It could be single-family, it could be townhomes. One thing of note, and I know this was not subject to the question, but in Community Business, townhomes are already a permitted use, as they are in R10. There is no difference in density between those two districts. Both would permit 10 units an acre.
That was going to be my question to you, Mr., was to ask if you would explain the multifamily and then the single-family, two-family, multi. So it sounds like the Community Business still allows, as it says, 10 units per acre, and that's still available whether it stays in the Community Business or if it goes to the Residential 10 or R10. It's still?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
So then what would be the purpose in the rezoning if that was the case? I mean, if that was the intended purpose?
So obviously, the applicant could speak the best to this, but it would remove the commercial uses if it now becomes residential. So the only uses would be those around single-family, multifamily, or anything related to that, such as maybe a park or that sort of thing.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster. Our next public hearing is PREZ 2023-20, the public hearing on the Laughter rezoning, and I recognize Carter Metcalf again for the staff background.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, the Commissioners, the next item is the Lotter rezoning, PREZ 2023, number 20. The applicant is Gray Outdoors LLC. The owners are Mary Lotter and Nancy Pachell. We'll begin with an overview of the request. This changed the property from rural agriculture to rural agriculture and highway business. So the proposal is for split zoning. The tax map number is 45-28. It's located on Richland's Highway and is in the Richland's Township. The proposed rezoning area is 12.40 acres of a 120.22-acre piece of property. The existing use is actively farmland. Now we'll look at the service. There's a 12-inch Onwassa Water Line along Richland's Highway, as well as a 12-inch Onwassa Sewer Force Main. Fire service for the area is Northwest Onslow with an ISO rating of five. And the traffic data we have was from 2019 on Richland's Highway for a trip count of 17,000 and an estimated staff capacity of 49,000. Excuse me. Yes, 49,000. The schools are Heritage Elementary, Trexler Middle School, and Richland's High School. Both elementary and the middle school have capacity while Richland's High School does not. Take a look at the zoning map. Here you can see the property is currently rural agriculture, and in that kind of hatched area would be that subject area for the 12.40-acre portion proposing to be rezoned. Take a look, the current zoning district is rural agriculture. Minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, or .46 acres. And the purpose of the rural agriculture zoning district is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses. The proposed zoning district is highway business, and no minimum lot size, and the purpose of this district is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along major highway corridors. And again, the property would have the highway business and rural agriculture zoning. The Comprehensive Plan details the property in two categories. The first is agriculture-forestry, and the purpose of this district is to maintain large areas in which most land are or have the high potential to be actively farmed or forested in an economic, sustainable manner. Another category is conservation, and this is to accommodate environmentally sensitive areas, such as those of areas of concern, our floodplains, and dedicated kind of green space areas. Now we'll look at the breakdown of those two categories by looking at the map. And you can see a majority of the property is in agriculture-forestry. Again, it's that district to, you know, protect those areas that have the high potential or actively being forested or farmed. And the rear of the property is in the conservation category. This is better showcased when we look at some of the environmental conditions for the property, and you can see that the very rear of the property is in the regulated floodway. That is our most restrictive flood zone. And you can see as well the AE flood zone adjacent to it. Look at reasonableness in the public interest. Proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to other commercial zoning in the surrounding area, and it is on a highway. This would be supported by three policies of the Comprehensive Plan. And the proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable because it does not align with our future land use map, as rural agriculture is a corresponding zoning district and highway business is not. This would not be supported by three policies or a Comprehensive Plan, as the plan details we're not to support strip development of our highways or as well leapfrog into rural areas. Now we'll continue and look at Planning Board, met on August 24th, and they voted unanimously to recommend denial. The applicant spoke on behalf of this request, and one citizen spoke against it. He detailed concern that in his neighborhood, immediately adjacent, there tends to be a lot of sinkholes, and, you know, stated that any development out there might be prone to similar issue, as well concerns about development affecting his property values. Take a look at the aerials now. You can see there's the property, and again, currently farmland, and the rezoning area is in the hatched area. And we'll take a look at what it looks like on the ground. So before you, let's see. As respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PREZ 2023, number 20, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the Laughter rezoning, and we do have two citizens who have signed up to speak. The first is Mr. Guy Williamson of Cedar Point, North Carolina.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Guy Williamson with Gray Outdoor LLC, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. And if you want to take a seat on the front row, they can ask you questions as soon as we close the public hearing. Our second citizen is Mr. John Pierce.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'm here to speak on behalf of Gray rezoning. In a perfect, typical utopia rezoning, normally you start out with highway business or a business district, and then you go back to either multifamily or single-family at the rear, and this is an opportunity to do this. And we may, some of us not want to see Onslow County change, but we are going to be subject to change. What we do have is a big highway in front of it, which is really and truly not ideal for single-family residential with that volume of traffic, which is on the road now. Of course, it's 17,000 per day, and it's capable of 47,000. And similarly, just like the Sylvester rezoning that I did a couple of years ago up the road from it within a stone's throw, it opens the opportunity for future businesses and that's why it wants to be located on a highway like this. And as to the reasonableness in the best public interest, I certainly feel like going forward, it's going to increase our tax base if businesses do develop along there, and we got an opportunity to control what type of business that does go there. And I think it's in the best public interest to rezonate, and I'll be here if there's any questions that any of the council people might have for me. I'll be right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. At this time, I will close the public hearing for the Laughter rezoning, 2023-00020. It is now available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion?
I have a question for Carter. Just so it's on the record, could you speak to the downside of a split zoning situation?
The downside?
Or any upside, if there is one?
Yeah, so staff always recommends that we do have, you know, zoning lines following property lines. It's more clear for individuals because they generally know where their property lines are. So the issue when you do have proposed split zoning is that if the development were to cross that, and now change is the permitted uses. So it is certainly not, you know, wrong potentially to do. It's just not staff-recommended, because in the past, we have found issues with that. And in 2021, when we did our zoning map update, we fixed a lot of split zoning that was out there that folks were unaware of. So we always recommend for zoning to follow property lines, but certainly the Board could consider it.
Thank you.
What was that, Carter? I'm sorry. When they, if you don't mind explaining, where the Board voted not to approve and then adopted a consistency statement, what was the?
That was my question, too.
What was that consistency statement that they?
So the consistency statement was that it was unreasonable and not in the public interest, and that it, you know, did not follow the future land use map. So the Board, whenever you adopt a consistency statement, it may not be in favor of being consistent. It may be unfavorable, but the Board always has to adopt one or the other, and so theirs was that was unreasonable.
Any further discussion?
So there is other highway business zoning right down the street. Really, the only objection that I saw was that it's split zoning, and we do have other split zoning in the county. And I have had to readjust property lines before. It costs lots of money to do that. So all we would do by denying this would be to cause the property owner to have to subdivide the property and go through this process again. So anyway, I'd be in favor of going ahead and doing this now.
This is similar to what's just up the road, what they've done as you come into the town of Richland's, is what it looks like. Okay. Next turn? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
No.
So that's, yep, I was going to say. So vote is four to three, and approval. Thank you. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. We have one last public hearing. This is on the summer 2023 zoning text changes, and again, our Planning and Development Director, Carter Metcalf, is the one who will give us the staff background. Thank you.
Our third and final item from planning, this is the Summer 2023 Zoning Text Amendment Request, ZTA number 2022, number three. And yes, that number is correct. This work was began in 2022, and we hope to bring it in the summer, and here we are in the fall. So this is one that we've been working on for quite some time and are very excited to bring before you. The applicant is obviously the Planning and Development Department. Staff is requesting modifications to the text in Article Two, Definitions, Article Three, Administrative Agencies, Four Procedures, Six Nonconformities, Invested Rights, Seven Zoning Districts, Eight Lot and Structure Standards, Nine Additional Required Standards, and Article Ten Development Standards. Staff is bringing a comprehensive amendment to you rather than individual ones. So the proposed amendments aim to clarify and simplify the review process. Look at a summary of these policy changes. One thing we are doing is aligning the zoning ordinance definitions for duplexes with North Carolina Building Code. So our department obviously reviews the plans, but also permit the structures as they're being built. And so we wanted to make sure as a proposal came through our office, it's in harmony throughout our whole department. And that alignment really deals with lot lines relative to duplexes. We clarified the process for expanding a nonconforming manufactured home park. So what that would be is if someone had a manufactured home park that didn't meet today's current standards. Well, at some point, they didn't meet this current standards, whether they existed prior to zoning, you know, maybe were established before 2003, or they just don't meet our current 2021 ordinance. So we clarified that they can expand by 10% of the number of units at whenever that status was established. Other counties nearby don't even provide a path forward for folks, but staff is proposing a 10% expansion. We clarified the process for specific retail uses, such as commercial kitchens. That's really when someone needs to prepare food relative to their food truck. And outdoor vendor sales, you can see this as a typical, like flea or retail market. We're proposing to change, schools will be being permitted by right in rural agriculture rather than being required by a special use permit, because these are often needs of public necessity. And we're reorganizing and revising the parking space requirements. We had a summary chart that was a summary and often was unclear how someone could be permitted. So now we're aligning this directly with our table of permitted uses, so that folks out there could just look at the ordinance, and they know it's very clear what they're going to have to do to get administrative approval. So that way, the process for getting review with our office is more clear, more straightforward, and simpler. And during August 24th, it was actually this year, that's a typo, the meeting for Onslow County Planning Board received a presentation, and the proposed amendments found them to be reasonable in the public interest and generally consistent with the plan. They voted unanimously to approve it, and no citizens spoke against the amendment. So it's respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning text amendment of ZTA 2022, number three, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the Summer 2023 Zoning Text Changes. It's item ZTA 2022-0003. No one has signed up. I will make one call to the audience. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. It's available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a clarification, oh.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
That's all right, go ahead. A clarification question. I think I was reading something when you were saying this. This version is going to be in alignment with the updated comprehensive plan. Is that what you were saying?
So the comprehensive plan has not been adopted by the Commissioners and still is in draft form. Likely, that plan will recommend some amendments to the ordinance. However, that has yet to be approved by the Commissioners. So this is in reference to when we adopted the zoning ordinance in 2021. There was an expectation that we were to continually look at the ordinance and always provide recommendations to the board of how to make it better.
Okay. I was just looking at the consistent with the expressed intent of the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan. That's where the, thank you.
So yeah, Carter, commercial kitchen is a pretty broad definition, and you really limited it to very few zoning districts. It seems like that's, that's going to cause issues. I don't know what, is there some kind of logic to why you only permitted it in the community business?
So the intent of that commercial kitchen is not what you would find in a restaurant. This is specifically for a kitchen that is involved in food preparation, where it's not going to be receiving members of the public. Typically, what we have found with folks that are proposing this is that they have a food truck or some other catering service where they need a location dedicated to their food preparation. The ordinance doesn't have a way for us to kind of permit them properly outside of being a restaurant, which kind of involves, you know, individuals of the public coming in, and so it's held to that standard. So this provides us another way to kind of have them be permitted.
So could these, I mean, small vendor, I mean, I've known people that catered out of their house and, and, you know, catered, did, you know, food truck, food at home and then put, loaded in the truck, so that would-
The preparation of food at someone's home, I mean, that's subject to more regulations than outside of our office. They do have to work with environmental health if you are doing food preparation.
So this would only apply to somebody who was required to be permitted by environmental health, which would not permit them to do it in their home anyway. Is that right?
I could not speak to environmental health recommendations or what they would require. I would defer to them, but this would be if someone's proposing a structure on a piece of property and they're wanting to do this use. And that's the only thing the structure was dedicated to. But, you know, I would defer to environmental health and what regulations they would have with food and safety in terms of preparation.
Do we have any commercial kitchens in the entire county that's not, where there's not in-house, I mean, that's our standalone buildings that just do commercial cooking?
We've had a number of individuals in the past year approach our office about proposing this exact use. You know, we had to make, we had to make sure there was several individuals, and once we noticed that trend is how it got into the zoning text amendments. But we see this is more of a, more up-and-coming thing that is starting to come into the county.
But, but this, but this particular one is, is because we have had an increase of vendors applying for an application. As, as a former one that had a food truck wagon was in the process of doing it, and with so much red tape and things to get, to jump the hurdles to get things done. And right now, there's approximately 15 people that are applying to get this done at their homes that live on property that is out in the country. So we're going to be taken away because they all can't own commercial property or get into commercial kitchens because of the restrictions that's being put forth. So this is something that we really need to look at, because we're limiting another tax base from prospering in Onslow County.
I got to get clarification, because I think this is a definition of commercial kitchen and its use. It is not a, it's not something that's created to go and put a halt to what other places are doing. This is simply put a definition of a commercial kitchen in, so when they apply, this is, this is here for us to reference. It's not something that's going to deny, as you spoke earlier, deny folks that are preparing in their home. So it's just one avenue for the commercial kitchen to get what they need, but it's not denying access or an avenue for others that are doing it a different way. Is that?
Yes, sir. If they wanted to do it in their home, there's still, I'm sure, a process to do that. They would have to get the necessary approvals before coming to our office. We just didn't have a way to permit someone if they wanted to do this avenue. And seeking not to deny someone because we don't have a process, I'd rather propose just to accommodate them and find a way to permit folks, especially as they are seeking to do development in the county.
Accommodation versus a barrier. So this is an accommodation. Okay.
Well, y'all worked hard on this. I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to vote against it because I'm concerned about the kitchens, but I do think that's going to cause an issue for us in the, in the future. So we might need to take a look at it.
See if the, if the board would like to direct planning staff, we can continue to look in that specific issue.
In a second.
I think we'll go ahead and move forward the voting. If this becomes an issue in the future, then that's something we'll take up at that point. So all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Ms. Griffin?
Chairman Foster and Commissioners, our next item is the North Carolina Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement, and it's with our Emergency Services Director, Norman Bryson.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. The item before you is an upgrade to the statewide mutual aid agreement, which is a mutual aid agreement with the state of North Carolina, all 100 counties and the Cherokee Nation, as well as a majority of the municipalities in the county. The specific verbiage causing for the upgrade and change is allowing communities to be able to make requests for mutual aid from other communities without having a state of emergency already in place for that request. The examples of the situations where we would see things like this is a large woods fire in which we had no state of emergency because we're not looking to do the evacuations or any protective orders from the Board of Commissioners, or in a mass casualty event where we're having to move assets much quicker than the board would be able to meet together and be able to put the state of emergency in place. We respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the statewide mutual aid agreement and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bryson.
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Our next item is the Fiscal Year 2024 Rural Operating Assistance Program Funds, and Jennifer Bumgarner, our Grants Manager, will present this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I bring to you today the Rural Operating Assistance Program, better known as ROPE, is a state-funded public transportation grant administered by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. ROPE consolidates the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistant Program, the Employment Transportation Assistant Program, and the Rural General Public Transportation into a single application package. Onslow County is eligible to receive ROPE funds in the amount of $288,863 for the funding year of 2023-24. This allocation consists of $115,854 for the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, $43,514 for the Employment Transportation Assistance Program, and $126,495 for the Rural General Public. That's 90% state funds and 10% local match, but that is already met within the existing ounce budget. That's not going to come out of our pocket. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider accepting the grant funds in the amount of $288,863 from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and authorize the county manager and finance officer to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Onslow County Veterans Treatment Court Grant Expansion, and this is with Assistant County Manager, Carrie Sanders.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Onslow County was awarded a five-year federal grant through the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $1,999,277 for the expansion of our Veterans Treatment Court. The first year of funding can begin on September 30th of 2023 in the amount of $399,948. These funds will be used to expand the capacity for services and treatment in our Veterans Treatment Court. The programmatic goals of expansion are to, again, increase capacity to assess veterans' risk and responsiveness to treatment, connect veterans to evidence-based treatment services and supports, connect all eligible veterans with benefits and treatment earned through their military service, decrease stressors related to daily living such as financial, housing, and employment, and to reduce reentry into the criminal justice system. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting or accepting the Department of Health and Human Services grant for the expansion of the Veterans Treatment Court and authorize Assistant County Manager, Carrie Sanders, to sign any necessary forms to ensure fiscal reimbursement on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is the 2023 Health Department Bad Debt Write-Off Item, and this is with our Health Director, Ms. Chrissy Hoover.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The item that I'm bringing you today is the 2023 Health Department Bad Debt Write-Off. The Health Department is required to bring, for your approval, a list of any bad debts that have accrued over the past year. For fiscal year 23, $36,039.50 has remained outstanding. By policy, we define any bad debt as those accounts that have had no activity for at least 15 months. This write-off amount represents many of our programs, and it's 678 total accounts. The majority of this bad debt is accumulated under the Women's Health Program. The Health Department does participate in the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, but that program requires a $50 threshold for submission. In fiscal year 23, the Health Department did recover $33,999.69 from the Debt Setoff Program. The amount that we are proposing for write-off is equal to less than 1% of our overall revenues for fiscal year 23. The balances on these accounts ranged from one penny all the way up to $1,996.68. With the cost of postage being 66 cents to send a letter, the savings that we would have each month for not generating these statements for bad debts would save us approximately $447.48. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approving the 2023 Health Department Bad Debt Write-Off in the amount of $36,039.50. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Our next item is the Design Services Contract for the Bear Creek Fire Station, and Assistant County Manager, Ben Warren, will present this item.
All right, good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. In November of last year, the board approved the reimbursement resolution for the Bear Creek Fire Station project. The reimbursement resolution allows the county to recover soft cost for this project, and soft cost are pre-construction services such as architectural design, engineering, surveying, and activities of that nature. Since that time, the county has gone through the RFQ, or Request for Qualifications, process, and has selected the firm Davis Kane Architects PA for the project. The contract that you have before you today would engage Davis Kane Architects for design and construction administration of the Bear Creek Fire Station project in an amount not to exceed $462,000. And the project will be funded by general obligation bond proceeds from the county's debt capacity model. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the contract with Davis Kane Architects PA in an amount not to exceed $462,000 and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Our next two items will be presented by our county attorney, Brett DeSelm, and they are second readings on project ordinances.
Yes, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. The, as Ms. Griffin just said, these both appeared before you at the last meeting, but because we did not have a unanimous approval, they had to be reread, and that's why they're before you today. The first is the Heinz Farm Park Improvement Project Ordinance. In the FY 2023 budget, the board approved $220,000 of tourism funds for the construction of a standalone restroom at Heinz Farm. Staff is currently working with a design professional on the restroom plans and site layout. The total project budget will be $220,000 for- The total project budget will be $220,000 for construction and other related services and equipment. The proposed capital project ordinance for the Heinz Farm Park Improvements restroom project includes revenue sources from the Fund 40 Tourism Fund balanced in the amount of $220,000. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the project ordinance for the Heinz Farm Park Improvements and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next one is the Hubert Culvert Bridge Project Ordinance. During the FY 24 budget process, $100,000 was approved in Fund 40, the capital improvement fund, for replacement of the Hubert Culvert Bridge. Severe weather events have eroded the integrity of the existing structure and created unsafe conditions. Staff has determined that replacement of the Culvert Bridge is the most effective option. As the construction may extend past FY 24, finance staff recommends transferring the budget to Fund 44 Capital Project Fund so that can be managed through a capital project ordinance. The proposed capital project ordinance for the Hubert Culvert Bridge project includes revenue sources from the Fund 40 Tourism Fund balanced in the amount of $100,000. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the project ordinance for the Hubert Culvert Bridge and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I think we are to the budget amendments now.
We are to the budget amendment, sir, and I would recognize our finance officer, Andrew Prince.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. This morning, I have three budget amendments for you. All three budget amendments are related to previously approved grant revenue the Board has approved. Budget Amendment 17 is an increase to revenues and expenditures totaling $399,948 to receive grant revenue from the VA Treatment Court Expansion Grant, which is awarded to the county on September 8th, 2023. Budget Amendment 18 is the pass-through grant expenditures provided to the Onslow County Unit Transit System, or OUTS, funding the Rural Operating Assistance Program totaling $295,688. Budget Amendment 19 is state-awarded grant to the county as a pass-through to the local Boys and Girls Club totaling $50,000. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments for approval. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
We are now to appointments. Our first appointment is to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with juvenile crime prevention councils in each county to galvanize community leaders locally and statewide to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. JCPC board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners and meet monthly in each county. Reginald Washington has provided a citizen participation application for consideration for seat number 19, which has a term of two years expiring June 30th, 2025. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. We respectfully request appointment of Reginald Washington in category seat 19 for this two-year term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Our second appointment is to the Airport Advisory Commission. The Airport Advisory Commission is comprised of seven members and one commissioner liaison with the mission of advising the airport director and the Board of Commissioners on issues related to the operation and development of the county's Albert J. Ellis Airport. Mr. Michael Shannon Whaley, Richland Township, had a term that expired September 30th, 2023. Mr. Whaley has a willingness to continue his service and has provided a citizen participation application for consideration. Mr. Jack Wilcox no longer resides in Onslow County and has provided a resignation effective September 15th, 2023. Mr. Richard Ricky Moretti and Mr. Alan Montieth, Stump Sound Township, have expressed an interest in serving on the Airport Advisory Commission. Ballots have been provided for the Board's convenience for this categorical seat. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Michael Shannon Whaley, Richland Township, and also consider the appointment of Mr. Richard Ricky Moretti or Mr. Alan Montieth, Stump Sound Township, for a three-year term expiring September 30th, 2025.
I would make a motion to put Shannon Whaley back in.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Mr. Whaley, congratulations. You're back.
Commissioners, Mr. Ricky Moretti will have the seat that you just voted on.
Thank you, and I think that brings us to comments now. Is that correct?
It sure does, and I just want to thank, this is my last meeting as a county manager. I wanted to thank all of you, our sitting Board of Commissioners, and also former Commissioners Shanahan and Bright for giving me this opportunity to serve Onslow County. I will truly miss our administrative team, our management team, our wonderful, wonderful team of employees, and the citizens that I've come to know in this position, and I will miss working for all of you. I also have to thank my husband, Justin, my kids, and my parents for their patience while I've served in this role. I also wish our interim county manager, David Smitherman, and this board the very best moving forward, and we look forward to welcoming him this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Go ahead and start our comments off this morning with Commissioner Scott.
I hope y'all have a good day, and I wish you the very best, and God bless.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Sharon for all of her service over the past, I guess it's been six years. It's gone by very quickly. She's done a great job for us. She's served with honor, with integrity, most importantly, in everything she did, and she did it with a smile on her face most of the time. My only regret is that I couldn't do anything about those things which was bringing the smile off her face, that brought her down and challenged, caused her some angst. So, thank you, and you've done a great service for Onslow County. You've saved us. I couldn't calculate the amount of dollars, but I know it's been hundreds of thousands of dollars at times with the suggestions that you've had, and so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Sharon, for your service, and I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor, which I know is right up your alley. The last thing that I just wanted to say was a reminder that I'm going to be doing a coffee with Commissioner Carpenter on next Tuesday, October the 10th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Port City Java. So if you want to come talk to me, I'd love to see you. Have a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
Where do I start? You know, I've been very fortunate by the citizens of Onslow County. This is my 19th year as a Commissioner. It's kind of unheard of for somebody to sit this long. I hope to be able to do it some more for the people of Onslow County. But the key thing is, Sharon, I've been around, I don't know how many managers it is now, but you're the best manager we've ever had. You put our fund balance in the best shape that it could ever have been put in. Your selection of our assistant county managers, some of the best assistant county managers we ever had. I can go on and on and on, and what you've done for our employees and what you've done for yourself, and you will be missed, and very much so. You've worked so hard for this community, and you've done such a good job. I want to thank you very much for that. And I know our managers, assistant county managers, and our, I'm going to get a little bit choked up myself here, but you've done such a good job, and our employees are really pleased with you. I mean, I've talked to so many of them, and they're going to miss you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sharon, I have to echo what you've heard, but I tell you, you've brought us through some of the worst times that Onslow County has had, probably in Onslow County's history, with the devastating hurricane and a pandemic. And you were instrumental in getting us through all that and getting us through in a better position, again, that we've ever been in. So financially and physically, and I just have to thank you for your work. I know you're going to do great in whatever endeavor you take on in the future. Just hope I don't have to sit on the other side of the table for you. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
A couple of things. I'll touch on you in a minute, Sharon. You know, one of the things about being a Commissioner is to be consistent in your voting and to be cohesive as the Board. And what I'm getting at is that when you vote, when you vote on this board for anything, whether rezoning issue or any other issue, when a board makes a decision, you move forward with the board, even though you disagreed, for example, Heinz Farm. I didn't vote for Heinz Farm, but my board did, and I say that collectively, my board, okay? So now it's my job, even though I voted against it, is to make sure that that project is successful and to support my board, even though I may disagree on certain other issues. I may agree on other issues. And the thing that's important about it is, you know, we're spending $220,000 on an upgrade for the bathroom facility at Heinz Farm, which is needed. Heinz Farm is in full swing. It's coming out of Tourism Fund. And when I scratch my head, that's Tourism Funds that don't come out of our General Fund, yet some people are willing to vote 3 million out of our General Fund for a YMCA pool. To me, that makes absolutely no sense. So, you know, as Commissioners, we strive together to work as a board, whether we disagree or agree. Whatever decision collectively is made as a board, it is our job as professionals that sit on this board to support our board and to do everything we can with the decision that was made. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? There are certain things that just don't make no sense to me, and I say the word "no sense," that's not proper grammar, any sense, but it makes absolutely no sense, especially when you're hammering for a bathroom out there and you've been repeatedly wanting a bathroom out there for three years. It just makes me scratch my head. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. You know, when you're sitting up here as a Board of Commissioner, people look at your voter consistency, but more importantly, they look at your honesty, and they look at your transparency and what you're trying to do. Votes should not be given up here out of political rhetoric or whatever it might be. Vote your conscience and vote your heart, and I think a lot of people on this board do that, and some may forget. Sharon, I don't even know what to say. I dreaded this day. But if somewhere asked me about Sharon, and I was to give a description of her character, these words pop out, and I wrote them down, and usually I don't write things down, you know that. Integrity, leadership, honesty, candor, intelligence, heart for service, dedication, opinionated, truthful, but the biggest thing, it's your character, is your integrity. I've been on the board for six, seven years now, and she came on as an assistant county manager. And I don't think people really understand what she's been through. So I'm going to make it known to what she's been through. During Hurricane Florence, during the tenure that she was the assistant deputy county manager, she lost her home, okay? She refused to leave the EOC. She stayed in that EOC despite the fact that her home was being washed out into the ocean because she had a concern for the people. We had to force her to leave, and even when we did that and told her to go home, she slept at the EOC because she was more concerned about the students, or the citizens. Lately, we had Tropical Storm Ophelia. She was on vacation in Raleigh. And when she found out that we're executing a state of emergency for Onslow County, she cut her vacation short, and her words were, "I'm the county manager. I need to be in the county during a time of disaster." Now, if that isn't a heart of dedication or service, I don't know what is. Her credentials are impeccable. She's an attorney, a well-liked attorney, very successful attorney who took this job because she wanted to serve the people. And that's what I'll always remember about you. You became a trusted colleague. When I've gone high to the right on certain issues, you've brought me down to earth. You told me, basically, that was stupid, and I appreciated the candor. Or I wouldn't do it that way, Commissioner Knapp. This is what I would do. You're upfront and echo Commissioner Buchanan's words. We have the best fund balance that we have had in seven years that I've been on this Board of Commissioner. Am I right? The best. You won the heart of my wife, a very opinionated Irish woman, and she criticizes everything. She wanted me to personally tell you thank you because she respects you to no end, and she, like her, you speak your mind. You're not scared to fight for your people, and you don't roll over for anybody, and I appreciate that. And that's the kind of county manager that we had and that we're going to miss. I can sit here and go on and on and on, but I just want you to know, Sharon, you're one of the best county managers that we've ever had. You became a friend. Your husband has become a friend. He supports you 100%. I can't say enough good things about you. I am going to miss you, like Paul said. We're going to miss you professionally, and I'm going to miss your candor. And David Smitherman has some very large shoes to fill, and I hope he can fill them. But I just want to wish you the best from my wife and me. God bless you, and I hope you're successful in your next adventure, and we're just a phone call away. But thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I sat down with Sharon a while back whenever I was given the opportunity to be on the board and then this last organizational meeting to represent Onslow County as their chairman. First thing I told you was, if I come in here with an idea and you think it's ridiculous, tell me. Because we don't need anyone sitting in that chair that just shakes their head and says yes to us. We need someone that looks at us and says, "That's not a good idea." And then if we choose to move forward with it, it's on us. And you've done a tremendous job of looking at us and telling us, "That's not a good idea," or no. And because of that, Onslow County is in a great, great situation. We are prepared. We are prepared for an emergency situation with our emergency fund balance. So you are leaving Onslow County in great shape. You're leaving it in a position that whoever comes in behind you will have to make some decisions, but we really need them to keep this ship with the wind at our backs and our sails full as we continue to move Onslow County in the direction and the position that you have put us in. I also said to you on some of those bad days that if leadership were easy, everyone would be a leader. Leadership's not easy. Leadership is one of the most difficult things that you can take on in your life. Your career's been teaching, a little bit of law, National or the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, county manager, assistant deputy county manager. You have a heart for service. So we know that Onslow County is only losing you in the role as county manager, but Onslow County is going to keep you as you continue to be a part of this county and the fabric of this community. We appreciate what you've done here. We look forward to what you are going to continue to bring to Onslow County because you're part of Onslow County. Onslow County is a great
Onslow County is a great place to live, work, and raise a family because of leadership and the people that live in this county. It makes a world of difference. And every time a Board is together, whether it's the Board of Education, a city council, a town, they all are working in what they believe is in the best interest of the citizens that they represent. You may disagree with us, but that's what these podiums are for, emails are for, and phones are for. You are more than welcome to share your disagreement with us. This nation was built on civil discourse. He starts off with "civil discourse." We can sit at the table and disagree, but after our disagreement, we should be able to move to the dinner table and have dinner and enjoy each other's company, because your opinion doesn't make it the gospel, and my opinion doesn't make it the gospel. But as long as we all sit down and read from the same book, we can turn whatever disagreement we have, become something that is implemented and is great for the citizens of this county. The problems this county faces is all because of growth. People don't come to a location because they don't think it's a nice place. Holly Ridge would not be growing at the rate it was growing if people didn't think it was a great place. North Topswell Beach, City of Jacksonville, Swansboro, Richlands, the county as a whole. If the leadership in our county was doing a poor job, if the leadership in our municipalities were doing a poor job, then our greatest concern would not be growth. It would be the least of our concerns. But because our leadership through the years in this county and our municipalities have been effective in what they do, we are a county that is growing rapidly, and that is something to be proud of because we've done something right. So congratulations to you, Ms. Griffin. Congratulations to the people that have worked with you over the last several years, and congratulations to Onslow County because this is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Seconded and for adjourned.